Thank you.
Okay, hold the sound on. Call to order the meeting of the Town of Sebastopol Board of Supervisors for Monday, August 18th at seven o'clock. I'll ask that you rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in its soul, with liberty and justice for all. Have a roll call to establish quorum.
Supervisor Weidman.
Here.
Supervisor Teis.
Here.
Chairman Zipper.
Here.
Supervisor Wolfle.
Here.
And Supervisor Stavnas.
All are present and we do have a quorum. The meet and greet is next. What we do in this case, if you've not been here before, we ask that you introduce yourself, give us some idea where you live, either in our town or wherever. And we'll start up here with Linda. He's our clerk treasurer and we'll work our way this way.
Linda Waite, clerk treasurer for the Town of Sebastopol, living at 507-5 Bluff Drive.
Dick Weidman, Town Supervisor, living at 4108 South Country View Road.
Chuck Teis, Supervisor, 4771 Bay Shore Drive. Dale Zipper, the chairman, 3850 Bay Shore.
Dan Wolfle, Supervisor, Park Road.
John Stavnas, Supervisor, 3811 Whitefish Bay Road.
Peter, you're on the ball.
Peter Wyatt, 4145 Cherry Road, retired engineer.
Victoria Sander, 4145 Cherry Road in Sebastopol. And I'd like to make a comment on item 10 for what it is.
All right, very good. Dale?
Dale Conklin, 5352 West Carlet Fort in Town of Sebastopol. I'm going to be representing the Soil and Water Conservation Department tonight on one of the topics.
Very good.
Thank you.
Peter Sigmund, I live in the Town of Gardner and I'm a physician. I'm interested in that one topic.
Very good.
Dean Hofer, I live in the Town of Gardner and I'm here representing the interests of members of my organization Clean Water Action Council of Northeast Wisconsin. And we have about 35 members here in Door County and about eight to 10 in Sebastopol. And I'll get to talk about item 10 four if I have the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I'm Edie Madsen. I have property on Sark Lake. I'm under new business, item number one, and I live in Illinois.
Behind your camera, there's a lady jumping or videographer for the, and he can never... Why do you raise your hand? That focuses. Okay, William Allen.
William Iwan from Town of Pierce, Kewaunee County, and on 12th Road.
Okay.
Suzie Bonia, I'm from the Town of Gasko, Lincoln Township, and I live on Nickel.
Nancy Utash, Town of Pierce, Kewaunee County, 85173 Fourth Road.
Vic Swanson from the Town of Oklahoma. I would also like to comment on number 10, item number four.
Okay.
Sam Utash, Kewaunee County.
Paul Utash, Town of Pierce, Door County.
Lynn Utash, Town of Pierce, Kewaunee County. I'm also a member of the state's spray irrigation newer work group and would like to make a comment on item 10.
Jan Schmitz, Town of Gardner.
Well, we thank you for all showing up tonight. Normally, there is pretty good reason why you're all here, so. Victoria is on her homework again. Okay, thank you very much for participating. The agenda has been properly noticed?
It has been properly noticed.
I need a motion then to adopt. Move that we adopt the agenda, August 18th, 2014. Second? Seconded by Mr. Weidman. Questions or comments?
I see Linda corrected the alumni softball tournament. That was quite a tournament.
I believe we do have a correction of the date, Joe.
Yes.
All right, we can correct that while we get to it. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify, say a aye. Opposed? Approval of the minutes, the Board of Supervisors, July 21st.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Okay, do we have any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify, say a aye. Opposed? Very well, let's continue on with the financial report for... Where do I have mine on the board? Okay, the financial report for July of 2014. If you've taken a look at it, you've seen the fund balances in the various accounts, the budget versus actual, and the transition list by date. We've also had the vouchers before you tonight. Were there any questions or comments? We'll accept those and place them on file. Moral committee reports and committee minutes. Do we have any?
I could speak on, we got the letter, existing letter for the rezoning around the Institute of Almy and outside of Sturgeon Bay. And I want to thank everybody. Let's thank the Plan Commission, to everybody that participated, and the consensus was not to rezone at this time. So there's a letter that would be placed on file here, and the Plan Commission wanted to recommend to the Town Board if we could get it in the newsletter, when the newsletter came out.
Dan is the author editor in charge. You want to make a note of that?
We can make a note of that. I don't know the timing of it, but we can talk about that if you like.
Otherwise, it'll be on file for anybody that inquires for Linda to give out or whatever.
All right, any other committee reports?
Property management.
Property management, we did have the minutes of July 16th, and we also, I'll give you an opportunity to speak here. And Door County Tourism Zone Commission and Executive Committee minutes, and they were in writing as well. Chuck, you want to expand on the property management?
Property Management Committee has been working on three parcels of property owned by the same people, Cherry Road. We've got the county involved using the Door County Sanitarian Humane Officer, and we've also got Sturgeon Bay Fire Chief, Tim Hurlash, involved in this because Sturgeon Bay is our fire department. Tim wrote letters, as a matter of fact, he inspected the properties, went over our ordinance with us, and wrote letters to the people identifying all of the hazards and unsanitary conditions and everything else that goes on in this property. He gave the owner 24 hours to shut the electricity off in a building that had collapsed, at which point the property owner did not do so, so he had the Sturgeon Bay utilities come and disconnect the building. He also gave the property owner till September 1st to contact, make contact, and make arrangements to get the properties repaired and cleaned up. To this point, evidently, the property owner did make an attempt to meet at one point. Tim was not available that day, and they never came back again. There's been no contact with the people since then. So we're notifying them, they have until September 1st to make contact and make arrangements, or we will proceed with abating the nuisance, using the town's attorney and getting court orders if necessary. At this point, suggestion to the Town Board that we have not set aside any money for this type of an action. We do have some reserves that we will be able to utilize in order to proceed here, but maybe in the budget process for next year, we should start considering putting some money aside to keep the nuisances cleaned up in the town.
Joe, this is our first attempt, or second attempt, to clean up some of the nuisances in the town, those dilapidated buildings, and those are perceived to be unsafe and either through health, safety, or potential fire hazard. And we're using the resources that are available to see if we can't correct them. Down the line, it might require us to go to court, to get court orders, and this would be the reason to alert the Town Board anyway, that we will be looking to allocate some dollars for the legal part of this as we go down the line. Hopefully, we're looking to get compliance by the property owners. We haven't gone to the point of contacting them directly, but we do know who they are. We will make that attempt to see if we can get compliance without any real enforcement. The mere fact of paying a fine or forfeiture is not what we're looking for. We're looking for voluntary cleanup, and we're going to pursue that with the available ordinances that we do have. We're also going to revamp our own ordinance. Do you want to speak to that, Chuck?
In 2011, we had several animal control ordinances, nuisance ordinances throughout the process. Some of the language was a little stiff. The Board decided to rescind those ordinances. So what we're in the process of doing now is taking the one ordinance that we do have on the books and trying to incorporate some of the necessary work and state statutes and county codes into our ordinance, and we'll be representing it back to the public, most likely through a public hearing, or at the least at the Town Board meetings here when things start moving ahead.
All right, very good. Licenses and permits are next, part of your packet to show the temporary Class B to the Sebastopol alumni benefit. Temporary Class B beverage, and also the construction permits for the town, as well the independent inspection, limited billing for compliance. No questions, we'll move on. Any business, homeowner well water testing update. Linda, you were very active in that. Give us an update.
Okay, tomorrow evening, Tuesday, August 19th, right here at Sebastopol Town Hall, beginning at 6:00 PM, we will have Kevin Masarick from University of Wisconsin Stevenspoint Center for Water Resources will be here to give a PowerPoint presentation, all of the homeowners or property owners who participated in the water testing program from the towns of Jacksonport, Sturgeon Bay, and Sebastopol. Everyone is invited to the town here, like I said, beginning at 6:00 PM. Kevin will be going over some of the results. He will not, the individual results were mailed just to the property owners, but Kevin will be here and sort of mapping out the various areas throughout those three towns and the test results that were unique or not unique to those various areas. So again, any of the homeowners who participated are invited to the Town Hall tomorrow evening.
Can you give us a quick, how many people participated and how many from our town?
We delivered 160 samples a few weeks ago to Stevenspoint. Eighty of those samples were from the Town of Sebastopol. The other 80 were split almost equally between Jacksonport and the Town of Sturgeon Bay. So again, homeowners are invited to come to that presentation, ask questions, present any concerns they might have, and Kevin will be more than happy to answer your questions.
There was supposed to have been a letter to a homeowner in the event they had a system that definitely failed, and we only had one.
Out of the 160, only two had E. coli in the water. They were chlorophyll. They were notified immediately to try to correct the situation and retest their water.
Very good. It was a good response and a good participation. Linda worked a lot of hours to make sure that it all got down there in time, and students at the university actually did these testing.
Good, I mean, the results that were sent back were very thorough and good explanation.
Very good.
It's a good program.
Every participant should have received an individual letter from the university with their results.
Okay, the next item then is the Emerald Ash Borer. Preventative application, Mr. Weidman was going to share his expertise with us.
Sure. Probably after Labor Day, after park usage declines a little bit, I'll be making a soil drench application of the insecticide, Imidacroprit, which is a systemic insecticide, be taken up by the ash trees that we have. One of the ways that a soil drench program like this works is that you have to get enough of this material into the tree to ward off Emerald Ash Borers. So it's a very common treatment program, limited exposure to people in the park. It's applied as a soil drench, not aerial spray or anything like this, so I think it's probably the most effective way to save our ash trees in the park, so sometime after Labor Day.
A license applicator is required or not?
It's not a restricted material, very common insecticide available on the retail market, so.
For those that have the trees on their property, what's the...
It's readily available, well, probably at garden centers this time of year because I think most of the large retail stores probably have taken it off their shelves. But Imidacroprit is the active ingredient. It's known by other names, Meriton, Privado, and it does a job not only for Emerald Ash Borer, but you can use it for your birch trees as well, for birch borer, any, any boring insect that would get into a tree.
I think we need to also take a look at the corner lot, Dick, down there where the Christmas tree is, and then, I don't know if we have any here on this property or not, but they're white trees. So if you're good at identifying them, we might want to catch any and all, so.
I can identify an ash tree.
Good thing.
Okay.
I'm only good with cherry trees when the cherries are on.
All right, very good. Let's move on to Martin Notice of Injury Claim for Damage. This is before us in the Advisory Council and the insurance company, is that we disallow the notice of claim of Peggy Martin against the Town of Sebastopol in regard to an incident that took place, and we don't even have a date.
January 9th.
Oh yeah, January 9th, 2014. It was a crash occurring on Matthew on the highway, a school bus, and we don't own a school, nor do we operate the schools, so. I would entertain a motion that we deny the...
We'll move.
Request.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a formal process that needs to be accomplished. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And where's... The next item apparently has attracted a lot of attention in the cause for a lot of you people being here tonight. What we're going to do, rather than let this go on all evening, if you have a particular item that you wish to speak to or about, Victoria brought it to our attention in the past, we'll start with her, and then the others can come in. I'll give Victoria no more than five minutes, and the rest of you are going to be limited to three, unless you're all going to be saying the same thing, then I'll allow one spokesman to go for five minutes. Fair enough? And then in response, I'm sure, Peter, you're supposed to say yes.
I shook my head.
Which one?
For the simple reason, you can't get a general consensus from all individuals to say the same thing so that they can be represented by one.
That's what I'm asking for now. And if that, if there is that one person that's going to do that, I'll allow that five minutes. If questions come up during that process, Dale Conklin from Soil and Water Conservation Department is here, he's not going to defend anything that might be the application of the manure through the process. However, he's going to answer any questions you might have relative to the nutrient management plans that are in place, and whether or not a DNR permit would be allowed for something like this, and as well, he will tell you what he knows about the liquid irrigation in another form other than the spray that we're talking about. Am I clear? You don't have to agree with me because I'm not... All right. Victoria, you can start off if you want. We can hook you up to the, or you want us...
Oh, I can be, I can project. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you're on at 7:20.
Okay, any of my leftover minutes go to somebody else. As per the questions to me at the July meeting, I brought answers and resources to this meeting, as you can see. I have prepared another letter with additional documentation. I've got a link to the University of Nebraska report, which includes the data on odor and use of local water when they're doing center pivot spraying. They need local water to do that. In addition, I've attached a copy of the resolution from the Town of Richmond, asking Walworth County to use county zoning to regulate center pivot spraying, and it gives their reasons. I've attached, it includes the link to Walworth County's research after that, which includes the report by the Wisconsin Department of Public Health. Those are links, they're extensive reports, I didn't print them. The Walworth County subsequently issued a moratorium in 2011, extended it in 2012, and based on my research, I'm asking Sebastopol Town Board to do two things to keep our town a great, safe place to live. First, ban center pivot spraying in Sebastopol as a public nuisance. You're rewriting your nuisance ordinance right now. There's no harm, no foul, even though they don't do it here, to keep them from doing it here, and due to the odor and the potential health threat to our community. Second, send a resolution to the Door County Board, a resolution now, not an ordinance, to ban or put a moratorium on this practice to protect public health. I have my document. Thank you very much. I'll see the floor.
Boy, you were pretty quick. Peter, you're next.
I would like to add to Victoria's admirable comments by requesting to bring to your attention that the tourism dollars in Door County alone were 299 million in 2013, and agricultural dollars for 2012 were 288 million. It's obvious that tourism is...
Try me again, what was it, $1 a month?
288 million for agriculture in 2012.
Oh, all right.
These are figures from appropriate internet websites, the University of Wisconsin and the Tourist Bureau of Door County. Because tourism is being so successful, I think it would be very harmful for center pivot effluent spreading to be allowed in Door County because it will have an adverse effect on tourism. And that's the point I'd like to make.
Well, everybody's pretty short. Peter, the other Peter, you want to be next?
I'm an internist, I'm retired from the Medical Corps of Wisconsin, have been taking care of patients now for 14 years as a volunteer in the community clinic and its criticism. Lots of the people in Sebastopol and elsewhere have reactive airways, connect sinusitis, asthma, and so on. This is a novel method of dispersing allergens and irritants, and anything that you smell is an irritant for somebody with reactive airways, into the air, besides affecting the people that live there that lose their property values. But the other thing is that infectious agents are looming there, and this has not been tested, and the DNR doesn't have a good evaluation strategy. Whenever you have a lot of animals together, there's a chance of mutations of various bacteria viruses. So there's even the possibility of, you know, a patient here and a patient there coming down with an unusual pneumonia, and you won't be able to immediately relate it to the process, but it's definitely a likely event, and it's probably would be antibiotic resistant because of the prevalent use of antibiotics in concentrated animal operations. So they're major, major medical concerns, and there's no evaluation strategy that satisfies medical criteria on the part of the state.
Are you mainly concerned about the spray itself? Is that it?
About the stuff going in the air.
The application?
Yeah. It does not get plowed under it, goes on to the crops. It dries, it can be blown off in dust in addition to the wind, and your scores and close tridio and anthrax and everything else and that stuff.
You have a minute left if you wish.
No, thanks.
Okay. You're next, but I forgot your name, right?
Dean Hofer from Clean Water Action Council. On behalf of our members here in Door County and the Town of Sebastopol, we recommend that the town consider a ban of aerial spraying of agricultural waste, that would be manure and other waste. In that waste, as I'm sure Victoria shall already share with you, there's up to 10% other materials, could be industrial waste, and we just learned this past week that it also could include human waste as well. So we urge the town to protect human health and the environment, but also to consider this a nuisance, that this truly would be a nuisance if it sprayed, and it could be sprayed not just in the spring or fall, where typically that's where it's applied those times of the year. Now, it could be sprayed throughout the year and would certainly have a potential to reduce problem value and enjoyment of life here in Sebastopol. Thank you.
Very good. All right, wait in the left, instead of the back.
William Iwan. I back up everything I've heard so far, and I'd likewise want to bring forward the concept that this is not just a nuisance. that this is not just a nuisance, it'd be a major hazard. And the reason why it's a major hazard, to back up what Dr. Sigman said, in addition to the unknown extremely dangerous microbes that may exist in this material because of all the use of antibiotics and so on, we have to keep in mind that there's up to five hundred different, five hundred and one different dangerous chemicals licensed in the state of Wisconsin by the, by DAT cap itself. And that consists of the herbicide, pesticide, rodenticide, and fungicide class of chemicals. And these are very long-lasting, very dangerous chemicals that are effective in parts per billion. Likewise, most of our endocrine-disrupting compounds. And the last thing you want to have happen to your water is what happened in Kiwanee County. We had Dr. Dan Klein-Bauer do analysis of some of our wells in Kiwanee County, Cali-Mead County, and a few other counties. Every well that she tested had endocrine-disrupting compounds in it, which are epigenetic. I don't know if you know what epigenetic means, but it means that you actually can be sowing the seeds for the future medical problems of generations, three, four generations out. This is becoming extremely well researched, very well quantified. Don't let it happen. You have a beautiful community, keep the door shut because once they kick it open and start spraying irrigation manure, your goose is cooked. Thank you.
All right. Are you done then?
I'm done.
Anyone else wishing, you wish to speak next? Okay. Tell us who you are first.
Nancy Utash. I'm from the town of Pierce in Kiwanee.
All right, Nancy.
I was a resident on Washington Island in Door County for fifteen years. I have now resided in Kiwanee County for the last decade. And, you know, I'm really fond of Door County, and I think what is going on on the peninsula in Washington Island is beautiful. I think that you'd be very wise to protect what you have. Since I departed from Washington Island and moved to Kiwanee County, I've witnessed a lot of things that are problematic in our county. A lot of pollution, I will tell you that for the most part of this summer, either due to beach closings where we are or whatnot. I bring my company up to Door County to enjoy the natural areas. I usually don't stay in Kiwanee County for various reasons. But with the manure irrigation, I think there's some misconceptions, and I think it's important for all of you to know that these units will be spraying as high as eight feet in the air. You hear a lot of different things like drop nozzles or that they'll practically be on the ground. That's pretty much a falsehood. When those units are set, they are set to go over crop, whether that be soybean or corn. They're not easy to adjust, so you're talking eight feet high. The problem with things when they are turned into particulate matter is they're very easily breathed in and inhaled and ingested, which is a human health threat. So it's particularly harmful to children who have very rapid respirations, and they also have less of an ability to detoxify. So they are literally a sponge for these environmental hazards that could come out of these units. I hope that you protect the air quality in Door County and that this can continue to be a place where I can bring my family. Where we're living is, we're in a crisis right now in the vast amount of well contamination we're dealing with. We're way behind the eight ball. And since I moved from the island, one thing I've talked to many citizens about here is you also should be addressing the voluminous amounts of waste that we want to dump here on you guys. I love Door County, I want to continue coming here. And along with the spray irrigation, you really need to be looking at what's being trucked out of our county that has sixteen mega farms that we are literally externalizing to you. And I hope that you're just awake and aware and can protect beautiful Door County.
Thank you for your time. Just right now, next.
Dick Swanson from Algoma.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Dick Swanson from Algoma.
Dick, okay.
Okay. I got involved with this issue a couple of years ago, and I did a lot of research. You can Google manure pivot spraying. Just type in Wisconsin, and you will find hundreds of articles. They're not all good. Here's a fact that you need to remember. Sand from the Sahara Desert, Africa, is picked up, carried across the Atlantic Ocean, and dropped in South America, the Amazon basin, by the wind. Now, sand, a grain of sand weighs thousands of times more than the hundred and sixty known pathogens that live in manure, the bugs. Now, you will be told, as we have been told, that we, the farmers, who want to do this, we are going to have a five-hundred-foot barrier, safety barrier. I want you to think about your living room, your carpet, your kids, your schools. The winds blow all the time. Kiwanee County's in a windmill, and they're trying to spray it down there. It does not make sense. I would strongly suggest that you vote against this and not only pivot spraying, but I would take a hard look at your ordinance about spreading of manure within the city limits, township. Work on that, and also storage of. Because as farms get bigger, storage will be an issue. They will have to have more manure pits. And they could put them pretty close to the town. And this is a great town. My wife and I go up to Whitefish, we are up there all the time. She lived up there, long time ago. The old cabin's on the north side. And to think that you could end up with pivot spraying up here is really a scary thought. This vote, this ordinance, whatever you're gonna do with this, it's your legacy. Your family name is on your vote. Protect what you got. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else? Back table over here.
Is it Soil and Water guy gonna go? Is he gonna speak?
No, go ahead.
Oh, he's gonna be our last one.
Can I go after him in case he misses anything? Seems like a sprayer.
Uh, no. As far as being determined, you could set the guy up.
I used to be on the town board of Washington, I know how that works.
All right.
I'm Lynn Utash, I'm from Kiwanee.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Lynn Utash from Kiwanee County. I am a farmer. The one thing that we have to realize is that nobody is protecting you. The DNR is not protecting you. The DAT cap is not protecting you, and neither is Department of Health Services protecting you. The only people that will protect you and your citizens is yourselves. In our county, seventy-nine percent of the farmland in Kiwanee County is managed under nutrient management plans. They will tell you that that is going to help you and protect you from any problems with manure in any form. We have over thirty percent of our wells tested in Kiwanee County are no longer fit to be drinking. Over forty percent in the towns of Red River and Lincoln, which are on cars, which is very similar to what you are living on here in Door County, have over forty percent of their wells tested that are either contaminated with nitrates or E. coli. This is coming to you. The farms in Kiwanee County are sending their waste to Door County. Nutrient management plans do not protect your water. DAT cap and the DNR have both stated nutrient management plans are put in place to protect nothing except for the profits of the farm and maximize their yield. It is not put in place to protect your groundwater or your surface waters. Forty percent in Ontario, Canada, forty percent of all spills are directly related to spray irrigation equipment. That is the highest cause of spills in Canada. Under the current spreading practices by us farmers, there is continuously somebody monitoring that system. A spray irrigation system has nobody watching it. They can literally spread millions of gallons before anybody notices it in the same spot. In car stopography like Door County, that means you have well contamination, you have surface water contamination. Nobody is watching it. The state of Wisconsin does have testing going on for pathogens. Five pathogens only. It is not a comprehensive testing procedure for all of the issues there, the problems with spray irrigation, the manure. There is no testing for what it's gonna do to your economy. There is nothing that is gonna show you how this is gonna affect your health and that of your farmers themselves. This is not actually agronomically, this is not necessary.
Okay, you got a thirty-second left.
Agronomically speaking, according to DAT cap and DNR, spray irrigation manure will blow away fifty percent more ammonia than current methods. Ammonia is your nitrogen. For agronomical principles, for agronomical use, you just blew away all of your fertilizer. This is not a good system, it is not necessary, and you should actually be protecting your tourism dollars.
Okay, very... All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, Dale, you've heard the concerns of those wanting to speak. Do you have irrigation, I guess, is the thing of the future as far as the liquid part? I invited you because we need to learn what your positions are with soil and water conservation. And what can you tell us? One of the questions that came up was whether or not this would affect a nutrient plant that might be available or on file or a contract, whatever. So the other question I had was, is there any regulation or permit required from the DNR? So we'll start there, and I'll give you as much time as you need.
Okay. First, I'd like to start off by saying where we are in the county government at this point. We had one meeting with the Health Department concerning the same topic. And at that meeting, we had a very pleasant discussion about manure and manure management. And the thought consensus there was that we should be getting together with the soil... The Health Department should be getting together with the Soil and Water Conservation Department because that's gonna be on their agenda at the September meeting. And also, legal should be involved in that discussion too to kind of get the three groups heads wrapped around the whole concept of a county ordinance, township ordinance. What is this spray irrigation all about? So at this point, we're, we're going to be pulling together a group of people to really educate ourselves on the spray irrigation and what it means. So that's gonna be my position at this meeting is to say where we are on a county level. Now, as far as manure, you know, after that meeting, I just put something together real quick, and that is just looking at manure as a, as a material that we have to deal with in society. For example, a small dairy herd of sixty cows with replacements need to haul out. If I'm gonna convert this to five-thousand-gallon loads, which is about the size of a semi-truck, is about a hundred and thirty loads per year. And one thing I'm gonna have to make really clear here is these numbers are based on experience and some assumptions, so you can't go to the bank with these, but these are gonna be pretty close. A medium operation in this area would have about a thousand loads, semi-loads of manure to haul out. A large one, which would be a KFO size, which is a thousand animal units, is about seven thousand loads. And the big ones that have been brought to our attention, the one at Rosendale Dairy, Kennard Farms, the one at Adams County, really big, big operations. They're at about nineteen thousand, twenty thousand semi-loads of effluent to haul out. The thing that we're all aware of when we talk about manure, manure, a lot of us have been exposed to manure throughout our lives from grandparents, et cetera. You have a cow that manures in a pile of straw bedding, gets hauled out and is brought out into the field. The bacterias, the nutrients, NPNK are in that manure. Nothing's changed per se on that end. A lot of times the milking was done, there was a hole in the back behind the milk house, cactails grew in the back there. That's where the old milk house waste went, detergents, et cetera. As the farmers got bigger and as rules came about, we had to deal with that effluent. Effluent is, like I said, detergents, acids that clean the pipelines. If a cow was treated, that milk was all, it used to be dumped out behind the milk house. Now, we have collected it and put it into a manure system or came up with a means of land application. So now we've combined that material, and that's what's being deemed manure now. That's what's being hauled out into the field. And that's where the nutrient management plan is, one of the gentlemen had spoke to, is NPNK. It's addressing the nutrients part of growing a crop and utilizing those nutrients, but it doesn't take into account some of the other issues that have been brought forward with respect to bacterias and things like that. So I think that was, that's just kind of a real quick synopsis of manure. We do have odor with liquid manure storage facilities.
Okay, do we have anybody in our community or somewhere in Door County who is actually doing this kind of irrigation or spray?
No one, no one has done the pivotal irrigation. Many years ago, Pat's company is out of Coleman, Wisconsin, put together a system called Integrity System, which was a system of, farmers were looking ahead and going, okay, we have this large, a lot of salespeople say pot of gold out there, which is the nutrients. But yet they also realized that they wanted efficiently get this manure hauled out and spread on the fields to grow their crops. So the idea was to draw up, the manure in a lagoon would separate out, the solids would drop off, and the liquid on the top would be less nutrient-laden, but would be a good source of nutrients to be applied to alfalfa. So they had the traveling guns, and guys have tried those out, but they did not succeed very well because they weren't managed or had a person watching them. And sometimes they'd get hung up, and they would create a big wet hole in that, and the farmers didn't want to continue on with. So that process didn't work. That was about ten years ago. But as far as in Door County right now, no center pivot being promoted.
What about a nutrient management plan? If you do have a farmer that's into that?
Yep.
Is this in addition to, or is this gonna be a requirement of? And the restriction of application?
We've, we've installed quite a few manure storage systems in Door County. One of the requirements to have any manure system is to have a nutrient management plan. Because there's, the idea is not to have a big tub full of manure and not have a proper means of applying that manure and balancing the nutrients that crop needs. We've also had landowners who had very little acres of ground to apply manure on, so we had road contracts to ensure that they encumbered enough crockland to be able to dispose of the manure, so they weren't overapplying. So we have had contractual obligations by the landowners to have enough land to spread manure on. We have been going through the county, we've prioritized the whole county. Eventually, everybody's gonna have a nutrient management plan. And that's gonna be at least the minimum that we're gonna expect every landlord to have in Door County.
Okay, I heard earlier was the fact that we do have Kiwanee County farmers bringing their manure to Door.
Correct, yep.
What part of Door County are they in?
It's generally been the town of Gardner, Brussels Union. They're importing, importing that manure. Talking about concern, one of the things that pivot irrigation does and or holding manure is getting the trucks off the road because a lot of towns are grappling with road degradation due to the heavy traffic. And so one of the ways is to pump manure and/or irrigate it, and you don't have the traffic on the road. But we do have quite a volume of manure coming into Door County from Kiwanee.
In Door County, we, when you and I spoke, you indicated that there was liquid being trucked up here in semis.
Yep.
And then what is the process to offload the liquid and spread on the field? And then, what is the process to offload the liquid and spread on the field?
There's really two ways of doing it. What they do is, let's say they truck it up in a semi and they have either top unloading, top loading, unloading semis, or they have bottom feed. The bottom feed ones are, they drive alongside the road and they'll have a pumping station that's placed into the field, and they hook a hose that pump, and that pump pumps the manure through a hose that's hooked onto a tractor with a drawbar with tines that injects the manure to the ground. That's one method of doing it. Some of the other outfits will have, there's semi tankers, you'll notice they'll have the funnel up on top and the manure on the sides. They fill it from the top, and a lot of times they'll have a, they'll either have a bar that will spread the manure on the land surface, not inject it, or they'll actually discharge from the top back of the truck onto the cropland.
Okay. My last question of you is, who is the Soil and Water Conservation Department and what your conservation is? What are you, 1, 2, 3?
We're all 1, 0.
But anyway, have you taken any concrete opinion as to whether or not this is a viable way of doing it, or are you looking into it more?
Well, we're definitely looking into it more. We have to understand what they're doing, what the proposals are, and how to move forward because it's a topic that's been brought to our departments and we just need to understand it and understand the direction to go. And likewise, we, our court counsel needs to understand too as to how we would formulate something. So, we're not going to jump in with both feet until we become more educated on the topic.
I think that's what we're looking for as well. All right, gentlemen, who are in the back there?
You have to understand too that, you know, spray irrigation is not going to alleviate your road problems. Here in Kiwanee County, as I said, we have 16 CAPOs. Those CAPOs are going to four different counties with their manure. We have manure pits, canards, if you brought up, 76 million gallons. There is absolutely no way that you can spread 76 million gallons without having trucks on the road. You've got Schmitz right down here, you know, they're going all the way up north of Institute, you know, with their manure. They are not going to be able to pipe from down by Forestville, north of Institute. They are going to be on your roads, and it's going to be your roads. They are moving north. There is nothing left anywhere south. They're moving north. So, you know, it's not going to save roads. This is brought up continuously, and our work group has looked at it. It's not going to change the road traffic. It's minimal. The way they're going to do that piping is within a very short distance.
I'm well aware of some of the regulations put on road usage by Gardener Town and other towns out there that actually close the road to allow the offload and stuff, so we're not totally void of any. Let me turn it to the board here. Who has a question?
Well, you know, I'm not, you know, taking a position for or against, but I think one of the considerations that has to be taken when you put together an ordinance is that you have to develop some type of quantitative standards rather than a qualitative analysis type. And I think that is done not only to have a common standard to judge all farmers by, but also to protect farmers who are applying manure now through conventional methods. I think that is something that has to go into an ordinance, how you establish a quantitative standard for odor, for instance, methane, bioorganisms. I mean, you have to have some standards to judge people by rather than just a qualitative judgment. Another thing I think that has to be considered too is not only, and we talk about water quality in Door County, we have to also consider the housing density and human effluent, I mean effluent as well. I mean, we have to consider that in water quality. We have to consider where we're putting housing units, using whatever methods of sewage disposal. I think that has to be on the board as well. I think water quality involves all type of effluent, whether it's produced by humans or by animals, and I think that's a big consideration as well. So, those are some things.
Very good. I think I have a question that Dale didn't answer. What stops anybody from doing it today? Do they need a permit? What is the DNR? If anything has to do with it, what if I wanted to do it tomorrow?
DNR has the permitting authorization right now.
So, they need a permit to start using pivot spraying?
For irrigation wise, that would be through, a permit through the DNR.
Okay.
I guess you were talking about all those 900 gallons and stuff. What timeframe is that in, a year or?
That's a one year.
Okay.
One year.
A lot of semi-loads.
While you're learning about all this process and studying all this information, wouldn't it be wise to put a moratorium out there to prevent it until you have all the answers or as many as you can possibly get?
I believe some communities have done that so that they had time to study it. I believe Adams County had put a moratorium on, but they left some wiggle room that if you wanted to apply, they would maybe consider it was, it wasn't like 100% moratorium, but that's a possibility.
Are we infringing on the farmer's rights or not?
Well.
We were cautioned by our attorney not to run before we took the walking steps.
And I think that's where we are too. We have to figure out what rules that right the farm, what language that has and how we either can or can't do something. Now, that's getting in a territory where we need to, you know, figure that out. And that's the county's perspective on it.
Reading the right to farm statutes, and the farm, there is a right to farm, but when we're talking trying to eliminate one process, you're not eliminating the right to farm. There are other options available. So, in this case, banning or putting a moratorium on the spray application of manure would not prevent the farmer from spreading the manure. So, I don't, I mean, I believe a moratorium may be the way to go until further information is put together. Anyone else from the board? Okay, last, go ahead.
Dick Swanson again. Addressing Dick, you were talking about complying this.
Right.
Well, the state does a really good job on telling what the nutrient management plan can do, how much it can put on is based on testing the soil here, knowing what's in it.
Yep.
And knowing what crop is going on.
Sure.
So, you can't put 68 tons per acre.
Right.
When the corn is going to take out 25 tons worth of nitrogen and P&amp;K. It's the drawout that sets it. Now, that sounds like a perfect way to handle this, but guys, your DNR has no idea what's going on. Their enforcement bureau is gone. There is no way to know. It's all self-reporting. That doesn't work so well. They have a problem. One dairy cow, mature barn dairy cow, produces 48 and a half tons of just liquid waste a year. In Kiwanee County, we are about to get 32,000 more cows. We're going to have 4.5 million tons of manure, and they're looking at you guys to bring it up here. I just want you to think about it. The cows are coming. The DNR has never said no to a permit request for a CAPO to get bigger, expand, or a new one, never. And all these water reports, all these well reports, these are awesome numbers. I don't think they care. It's about the money. And pivot spraying is only about emptying that lagoon as cheap as possible and spreading it. It's a fixed gun that goes, not a gun, it's a circular thing. Our own farmers have told us a million gallons per application easily. That's clean, perfectly pristine water coming out of your aquifer, being pumped down the pipes and out. And you know what's, when it does hit the ground in July, whenever they start doing this, it evaporates, it goes back up into the air, and then it's carried away with all the bugs in it. And we can't stop this unless we take it from right here. Everybody has to get on it. And I know if any of you rent land to a farmer, you have to abstain from the vote. You have a conflict of interest. It financially impacts you. You can't vote.
Well, we don't have.
I know, I'm just saying.
Farmers, then we don't.
Yeah, but you don't know who's renting land to whom.
Yeah, sure.
That's why our trucks are coming up here to you, because people have said yes. So, it's just going to come.
Okay.
Just 15 seconds.
We should put her.
15 seconds.
Well, I'm not going to belabor this all. What do you?
I just wanted to say that by passing a ban or a moratorium, you're protecting yourself from manure that's not even being produced here. It's being produced in Kiwanee County, a brown county brought up here. So, protect yourself from outside lagoons.
Very good. All right.
I'll be very brief. In the form of manure disposal, known as spray irrigation of manure, your ammonias spike by 50%. We are also told in Kiwanee County, depending on our seasons, you could be looking at a form of manure disposal that could technically last six, seven, eight months of the year. And they also said at one particular site, that unit could be running as long as 10 hours during the day. Thank you.
Well, very well. I thank you for bringing it to our attention. Hopefully, everybody made notes on what was accomplished tonight. We'll bring it back for our visit after we get some guidance from our attorney to see what we can do. No matter which way we go from now, it costs us money to accomplish that and down the line as well. My final question would be, does Kiwanee County as a blanket limit or have a moratorium?
We do not.
City of El Goma passed an ordinance banning it, and the town of Lincoln passed a resolution banning it. So, those two towns, city and towns have taken action.
And have you people made an appearance at the other town boards or?
Yes.
Very good.
I understand one question. Is it, then, does it come down to a town-by-town ordinance and not a county-wide ordinance?
Yes.
That's the issue.
Well, it starts at town.
Wood County is currently looking at placing a countywide ordinance. It is going to their board this month. That Adams County, like you heard, has, is actually a ordinance, but it's a regulation similar to a moratorium.
I only referred to it because that was Victoria's request immediately, that we go on record with a resolution and advise.
A resolution to the county, but we can put it in as a public nuisance here now, just like having, you have three parcels right now. You're looking at that are creating public health hazards and are a public nuisance for their neighbor and their community. This also would be that. It would not, and it would be something you could change should the situation change later, but it's simple enough to add it to your public nuisance ordinance now and work on a resolution to the county. The county could do zoning. It could ban it by zoning or it could regulate it by zoning. Walworth County has put in a moratorium, which they've extended, and I've got the links in that for you. I've got some of the research here. It's timely to do it for Sebastopol now before, and then someone can apply and then it can be looked at. But right now, put a little roadblock up, say, wait a minute, we want to check your driver's license here. It's a roadblock, it's a stop. It gives you a break.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, any final comment here? Okay. Thanks again. You're welcome to stay.
Actually, we're doing water testing tomorrow, we have to find the areas.
Okay. Very good. Okay, let's move on then. The next item of business would be the new business, and it's the Edith Mattson petition for the grant of variance on setbacks from the town road right of a floodplain extension at 5301 South Lake Road. Edith here?
Yes.
Okay. John, why don't you bring it forward?
All right, since we've done with the hugging.
You've got competition going, there's another meeting going on. All right, go right ahead.
All right. Chris Anderson met with us about, what was the first one, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, a month?
A month, yeah. She was here last week for the.
Yes, she was here, and they denied that one, so.
Oh, you mean the first?
The first, yes.
Yes.
And it was with the garage and a bigger house.
Asking for wetland setback.
Wet, correct.
And the relief from the road and the garage, yes.
Yes. And so, then they redid it, and this is the variance in front of us that is quite a bit smaller. If you look on your maps in the back, the blue, the very last page of your packet, the blue line is the buildable part, and then if you flip it over, the red line is the new house that they want to build right now. And I guess one of our concerns was to you is Chris Anderson has no contract with you or?
Yes, I mean, she does not, you're correct.
She says she's going to be the project manager and a friend, so I guess my question to you is, does she have the right to speak for you at these meetings?
She did have the right, and that was because I was unable to be here because of my work.
Okay.
I appreciate you including me on the agenda and the BOA giving me a chance to repetition before the six months are up. I will be at the meeting next Tuesday for that also. But she has been working on this since I bought the property. She's very familiar with Door County, and she's lived here most of her life, and familiar with construction. She comes from a construction family, and so I've given her the lead on this because I'm kind of a newbie on the whole project, so.
Do we want something in writing or just?
No, as long as it came from the end.
Okay. So, anything that you have to add? Do you have a copy of yours?
I don't have mine with me, but I know what the petition is for, and I basically listened to and read the results of my first petition, the concerns about the wetlands. It's, you know, it's a fragile land, and I'm sensitive to that. I'm not including a garage because I can work around the building envelope for that if I do decide to put a garage in. I'm asking for only seven feet from the road as far as the setback. I think it's about half of what my original petition was. And then I'm not asking for any wetland relief for the house, just a five-foot floodplain relief on the east to west side, trying to work more within the original building envelope on that part of the land, also being sensitive to the berm that's there as well as the wetlands.
Okay. Who actually designed your building?
Joe Evers.
Joe, the kitchen magician?
He used to work at Lamperts as a designer on the side, I believe, I'm not sure. He used to work at Lamperts as a designer on the side, I believe. I'm not sure.
Okay, John, yours.
The plan commission recommended to the town board to grant the variance. So I make a motion. I make a recommendation to the RPC. Or to the town board. How do they, gotta word it for the town board. I recommend that we grant the variance for Edith Mattson.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. What were your lines here on the proposed house? It always in the red line?
If you, the blue, go in the very back of the thing?
Yeah, got it.
The red line is the proposed house, and the blue line is the buildable lot, the buildable space on the lot.
Does it fit in there?
It's a little bit over. It'll fit in there, yes, in the lot, but in the buildable part of it. Well, they were gonna wrap it almost around this front part.
Around the wetland.
And the garage was on the other side. And then the retaining wall is still going up to protect the wetlands in the middle there. But they had numerous violations of boundary disputes between the road, the wetlands.
Isn't there an elevation issue there too? When we went out and looked at this lot where it's like.
The house on the other side is quite a bit higher. Yes.
Well, that was artificially. The house on the other side was artificially, grade was artificially raised.
Right, but there was not, they had a more footprint for a buildable part. They didn't have to go for a variance.
Okay, questions or comments? Linda, how do you have that motion recorded?
Well, it would be a town board recommending approval to the resource planning committee.
Recommending approval by the RPC.
Correct.
Or is that where it's going?
Board of adjustment.
Sorry, Board of adjustment.
How long ago did you buy this lot?
I bought it in the fall of two thousand and eleven.
Were you aware of all of the area that was unbuildable? I mean, we haven't been out to the lot. I mean, it's really tough.
It's a tough footprint there. Yeah, I was aware of it, but I was also told that by the zoning commission that it was, it would be probable to get five-foot variance of floodplain relief.
How much fill is going to be brought in for the relief that you need on, what, six feet and seven feet? Do we know?
Is that what they're gonna raise it up?
We don't have that number.
No.
Considerable amount.
Less than the neighbor.
I don't think it's as much as the neighbor.
No.
You're asking for five feet of floodplain relief on the east and west side of the house, and seven feet of relief from the center line of the road. All right. Are we ready to roll down this or? Let's go on a, I'll ask for a roll call on this one.
I got a comment yet. We put down the motion was from the unique property limitations creating difficulty in designing a home to match the characteristics of the lot. And that's how.
Very good. That would explain the hardship.
I'll give you this.
Do I need to incorporate that language into the motion? You just read some language supervisor status. Do I need to put all of that language into your motion?
Yes. I'll give you.
So you're reading right from the minutes?
I'm reading right from the minutes.
Okay, whenever you are ready, we need a roll call.
I'm just gonna make a note to myself that I need to incorporate that specific language before I forget.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so roll call. Supervisor Wofel?
No.
Supervisor Stavnis?
Yes.
Supervisor Weidman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tice?
No.
Chairman Zipper?
No. So the motion fails on a three to two, but the motion would still go to the Board of Adjustment recommending denial. Correct?
Yes.
Can I ask something? There was a number of properties along the road that have asked for road setback, wetland setback, variance, and floodplain setback that in some cases was, I believe, more than what I'm asking for. And I'm just wondering, is it because of the unique building envelope that is?
Yeah. On my visit out there, I just, I could not see any kind of building in that property. It's something that.
Any assistance?
Yes.
Okay. I looked at, you know, I looked at the lot too. And personally, if I was to build a house there, I wouldn't consider it. But the fact is, you were sold and told by the zoning department that that is a buildable lot. And established the fact that a building, a residence, could be built on that lot. And from that point, you proceeded to, you know, design a home or whatever to build on that lot. So I also have difficulty with the denial based on the fact that the precedent has been set in that area with several of the homes asking for variances and being granted variances. That's a point you just raised. So I think that's a problem with our zoning department or planning department is that when they classify a lot as being buildable, people should be able to build a residence on that lot, so.
So you can still build them.
You could build a smaller footprint.
You have to stay inside the blue line.
Right.
I understand that. I'm just trying to think of the typical homes that are on that road and also the resale value of the home. If it's, you know, if it's a small home, it's not necessarily gonna be, you know, as desirable.
And we discussed that point in our committee meeting as well. Too small of a building would mean the value of that home would be greatly reduced. Its resale value would be greatly diminished. That was also consideration.
Okay, you can bring all that stuff forward to the Board of Adjustment, and perhaps he'll have a kinder ear to listen. Okay, thanks. Move on capital improvement, plan the draft. It's very well put together. Linda's idea of where we should be heading. The benefits of criteria and inventory. Budget policy, evaluate, prioritize, and approach of new projects. Pavement management plan. Long-term contract implementation and review. And I actually like reforms. I don't know where they came from. Project requests were rather nice. Capital improvement rating and also the improvement project equipment plan. Looks like it touches on most everything, and it's a very good start. I think the purpose is to bring it forward now. And if anyone has a recommendation, I don't want to take your thunder away from you, but do you want to explain what your intent was here?
Yes, well, if we go back to two thousand and eight when we finalized our comprehensive plan, it does recommend that we have a capital improvement plan or program in place when we apply for local road or town road improvement funds. That road is supposed to be on our radar for at least two years in order to make application for those funds. Luckily, Shower Road, we did have it on our radar for the past two years, so we were able to secure that twenty thousand. Likewise, if we ever intend to go for grants, which we should be probably pursuing more grants and other financing sources out there, almost everyone will say, well, is this part of your capital improvement plan? Is it out on your radar, or is this just something that, oh, we need something new at the park? And, you know. And I think the forms for each of the committees will be a real asset. We could do a trial run with this coming budget session. Send the request forms to each of the committee chairmans and/or the committee members. You know, what do you anticipate? What's your project? What do you anticipate for its cost? Will this be, will we pay for it with just the tax levy? Or do you have some grant funds out there, perhaps a fundraising opportunity? What is the purpose of your quest? And again, how much it will cost? What is the justification, the estimated life? I think just, it's a good planning tool for us going forward. And like I said, if we wanted to just give it a shot this budget season with these forms and see how it goes. Likewise, for the, I included a couple of samples on that capital improvement projects and equipment plan. We've talked about road construction. Obviously, we want our Whistler rating to reflect that this certain road needs improvement. The town park, they've been, we've talked about replacing the truck. I'm not sure how much longer that truck's going to need. But again, if we know that, okay, in two years, we will accumulate enough funds to replace that truck with either new or used vehicle. I know the park chairman has talked about resealing the parking lot. Now, if we can kind of plan this out over a few years, it won't be such a big hit at one time to our budget. Administration, we replaced our computers this year. I'm thinking we're probably gonna have to replace that copier sooner or later. It's a great machine right now. We picked it up used. But I'm not sure we'll find that at such a good deal next year or the year after when it comes time to replace. So those were just some sample items.
Very good.
So I think, like I said, it would be a very useful tool for planning, for budgeting. And again, just to qualify for some of these grants or fundraisers, put the item out there on the radar, yes, this is part of our plan.
Very good. You did a very nice job.
Thank you.
Very good.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, we were gonna have resolutions on committee assignments. However, three of the four people I contacted came back with a no thank you at this time. We'll work on it down the line, and we'll function with the people that we have currently.
Can you provide some incentives possibly for committee members?
Do what?
Incentives? Incentives for people to volunteer?
Yeah, they can come to the meeting, actually get paid.
Ten dollars an hour.
Maybe something more creative.
Fear.
Fear?
Fear.
Fear, oh, fear, I thought you said fear.
Okay, approval of the vouchers, bills, and claims, I'll be there. We have a motion?
I'll move a voucher bill plan July twenty-two of fourteen through August eighteen of fourteen.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions or comments? I didn't sign that yet. Where is it now? No, there, okay. I'll catch it before we're done. All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Just a question on cash in general. Did we ever get our money back on the byways, Linda? Hey, we came like a couple bucks.
Yes, we were within our, I believe, five thousand dollars.
Five thousand, a hundred and sixty, I believe it was.
And we did get the final distribution. Oh, likewise, on the water testing program, you'll see a reimbursement to me in there for mileage. And the Door County Environmental Council did cover everything. They covered the mileage.
Cool.
The advertising. Of course, I'm waiting for the bill from the UW because they will be billing us for that.
We have that already.
Well, we have that money.
Right.
Assume we don't have any bad checks.
So we should end up with zero.
Cool.
Very good. Nicely done. Okay, correspondence. We didn't have a whole bunch more, but. See anything that tripped your creek or there? The northeast asphalt permit was granted in Wisconsin Towns Association. Updates. And roundabouts replace the dangerous intersection.
Yes, can't wait.
Get ready to.
They can put that in a little bigger printing, too.
It's not crossroads.
That's doing still a little.
Wow, nebulous.
Okay, and there are some Wisconsin Coastal Management Grants available. I don't know, is there a group going for anymore?
That's different than coastal byways.
Oh.
This is one that we'd use for putting a pier in or something.
And a matter of.
Would we be able to look at it to do something on it, the Dunes?
That would be under the byways though, right?
No, to dredge the sand or work on the dock.
I didn't hear.
We couldn't get enough money to dredge the sand. We'd break the state.
I did hear today that that's a possibility. They were going to submit a grant to dredge the Dunes Lake.
Oh, Dunes Lake.
Oh, Dunes Lake.
So we're talking about our break wall.
We ain't got that sound. Okay, preliminary, we did have a couple of parcels in our area, Alabama and Fifth, and also on Glidden Drive up for foreclosure. Preliminary estimate of January two thousand and one fourteen shows that we're at twenty-six sixty-two up from twenty-six twenty-eight. And Door County Environmental Council stopped the Green Bay dead zone. Guest speaker, Gordon Stevenson, he and our Surface Water runoff department head. And the wetlands handbook, it's free if you want it.
The institutional population is still zero, Linda. So we've got some people around that we just haven't captured yet.
Last time around, I brought forward the weather situation here in the town that caught everyone by surprise on a night that almost was. And I did get a response from Danny Williams, who is the EMS and emergency management director. The city is the only one that does have a warning system. And it's really only designed to alert people who are outside or workplace buildings. The best method for residents in the home or public building would be a weather alert radio set off immediately upon issuance of a severe weather event from the National Weather Service in Green Bay. And the Office of Emergency Management near the hospital has those radios available for thirty dollars. The last alert system, which was recently been put in a place called Code Red, the system will notify all residents that have a landline or a cellphone. The system requires residents or visitors to go to a website and register. So if you are inclined to do that, we can provide you with the. So if you are inclined to do that, we can provide you with the link, and...
Then they got to have that phone by them when the bad weather, so... Whatever phone number they put down.
Okay, let's get on to the announcements. Water sampling is tomorrow evening at 6:00. Everyone is welcome to come and listen to the presentation. So Astro Alumni Softball Tournament, the town park begins when, John?
29th.
29th through the 30th.
Yeah, it was a long tournament.
The Door County Tourism Zone Commission, Sebastopol as host, on Thursday, August 21 at 9:00 in the morning. Door County Unit of Wisconsin Towns Association meeting on Washington Island is August 23. By the way, we have five in my car, I guess?
Okay.
Do we have any more?
Yourself?
You and Paul and...
Myself, Paul.
Was Chuck all with us, or Chuck not going there?
That might not be him.
Okay, but Anagul is going to go with us.
David Anagul may ride with us, if there's room, so I could tell him that there's room.
So...
Yeah, I think we'll have a good turnout. I think we have about 20 to 25 people signed up.
All right. Very well, and we're going to, we need to catch the ferry at about, what, 10:00 or?
There's two ferries, one at 10:15 or 10:45.
Okay. And we'll get back about 3:00 in the afternoon, so...
That's this Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because Sunday, the schedule changes, the ferry schedule changes on Sunday.
Cool.
And I think they need to go every hour, on the hour.
There'll be a presentation by the DNR, I'm not sure on the topic, but maybe we could ask some questions for them. And then also the dredging project, and a death's door barbecue lunch at the airport.
You can fish on the way over on the ferry.
I can fish on the ferry. I've tried.
Okay, I don't know if you realize, but on your way in, you saw the new grader that we have?
Yes.
Is that available for rent?
The new paint job that we have?
Is that available for rental?
That's our new snowplow.
Pardon?
New snowplow.
You seen her in? Laddie can probably put that up on his video.
It's absolutely beautiful.
There's some copies on the table. Formal, thank you.
Excellent job, very nice.
We'll put some paint on there, too.
I am.
It's not going to be going quickly.
Reminder, WTA Workshop, Thursday, September 18th, in Green Bay, and that would be the implement of husbandry thing, and we need to come up with that ordinance by 1-1 of 2015. The next board meeting is September 22, and do we have any items for the agenda? Okay, we'll work on the stuff that came up tonight. Any other matters to be discussed?
They adjourned.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.